Sarah's out of town.
Okay, good evening. We have a great crowd here tonight. Welcome, thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, April 7th, 2022. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Ms. Atkins?
Here.
Mayor Abu Osley?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Ms. Menzer? Mr. Sternad?
Here.
Thank you. This time we have a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay. We have one of my favorite things this evening, which is oath of office. We'll start with the chief and I'll come down and. Minister Dia.
I'll go ahead and introduce them. Okay. Well, it's my privilege, council, mayor. We have four more firefighters that have completed their first year of probation and they are full career firefighters, but because of COVID, we hadn't had them sworn in yet. So this should be the last batch since COVID. So that's a good thing. First, I want to introduce Logan Ludwig. Logan. Logan was a 2012 graduate of Marion High School. He started with the department in 2020 as one of our paid-on-call firefighters and was a former volunteer member of the Hiawatha Fire Department. He got his Emergency Medical Technician Certification from Kirkwood Community College. Logan was a former nursing and athletic training major at the University of Northern Iowa and was a carpenter for classic home remodeling before coming to the Marion Fire Department. Logan stated he lived his whole life in Marion and wanted to give back to this community. Go ahead and step forward. Second, Dustin Burning. Dustin moved back to Iowa from Indiana where he had lived for a couple of years. And in Indiana, he was on the Merrillville Volunteer Fire Department. And at that time, he was able to attend and graduate from the District One Fire Academy in the state of Indiana. Dustin was a former machinist in Dubuque in Indiana before becoming a paid-on-call firefighter for our department in 2020. Dustin stated he has wanted to be a firefighter and wants to be for the rest of his life and chose the Marion area over Dubuque because he felt Marion was growing much faster than Dubuque. Our third firefighter, Drew Hague. Drew spent seven years as a volunteer on the Monticello Fire Department where he had served as a training officer and worked part-time for the Monticello Ambulance Service. Drew graduated from Monticello High School in 2008 and had been working for the Lynn County Roads Department before coming to Marion Fire. Drew stated in his interview that he lives and breathes the fire service, but does not consider himself a very good cook. Last but not least, Joe Westendorf. Joe grew up in Iowa and graduated from East Marshall High School in 2010. He became a volunteer firefighter for the La Grande Fire Department at the age of 18 and later obtained his Associate's Degree in Fire Science and his Advanced Emergency Medical Tech Certification from Kirkwood Community College. Since 2015, he was a store manager for O'Reilly Auto Parts in Iowa City and was a volunteer firefighter ranking at captain level for the Hiawatha Fire Department. He stated, "It's been a long road, but worth the wait." Mayor, I present to you these four fine firefighters.
Thank you, chief. And I just want to take a moment to say thank you for choosing to be part of Team Marion. We're really happy that you're on our team. And I know you've been working for a while, but we finally get to make it official. And we're going to proceed with the oath of office and we'll do it one at a time, okay? So. We'll start with Logan. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Logan.
I, Logan.
As a firefighter in Marion, Iowa.
As a firefighter in Marion, Iowa.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
The Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the ordinances of the City of Marion, Iowa.
And the ordinances of the City of Marion, Iowa.
And that I will serve the City of Marion.
I will serve the City of Marion.
And its fire department.
And its fire department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
With honor and respect.
With honor and respect.
And an adherence to the ethics of the fire service.
And, uh-oh.
An adherence. There you go. Congratulations. Dustin, alright, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I.
I, Dustin Burn.
As a firefighter in Marion, Iowa.
As a firefighter in Marion, Iowa.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the ordinances of the City of Marion, Iowa.
And the ordinances of the City of Marion, Iowa.
And that I will serve the City of Marion.
I will serve the City of Marion.
And its fire department.
And its fire department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
With honor and respect.
With honor and respect.
And an adherence to the ethics of the fire service.
And an adherence to the ethics of the fire service.
Congratulations. Repeat after me. I, say your name.
I, Drew Hague.
As a firefighter in Marion, Iowa.
Firefighter in Marion, Iowa.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the ordinances of the City of Marion, Iowa.
And the ordinances of the City of Marion.
That I will serve the City of Marion.
I will serve the City of Marion.
And its fire department.
And its fire department.
The best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
With honor and respect.
With honor and respect.
And an adherence to the ethics of the fire service.
And an adherence to the ethics of the fire service.
I, Mr. Russell. As a firefighter in Marion, Iowa. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
The Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the ordinances of the City of Marion, Iowa. And that I will serve the City of Marion. And its fire department. The best of my ability. With honor and respect. And an adherence to the ethics of the fire service. Congratulations.
And now would the family members who would like to pin their new badges? Well, they don't have their badges on yet.
And I have to say, it's always so cool to see the support from other department members. You know, when they show up for these things, it says a lot. So thank you all for coming. Okay, anything else on that, chief, or maybe move on? Okay. Also this evening, we have two proclamations. The first proclamation is Fair Housing Month, which is April 2022. And Mayor Pro Tem Brandt has offered to read that proclamation. And we have Renee with the Civil Rights Commission here to accept it. Please come forward. Yep. You can stand with Will as he reads it.
Okay.
Whereas April 2022 marks the 54th anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Act titled H of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act. And whereas the act sought to open doors of opportunity and eliminate discrimination in housing into affirmatively further fair housing. And as we celebrate the 54th anniversary of this historic legislation, we reaffirm our commitment to ensuring that everyone has equal and fair access to housing. And whereas fair housing assures individuals have the right to choose where to live without discrimination based on age, color, creed, familial status, gender identity, marital status, mental disability, national origin, physical disability, race, religion, source of income, sex or sexual orientation. And whereas in Marion, we want to recognize as an open and exclusive community that is committed to providing fair housing and advocating for equal housing opportunity for all residents and prospective residents of Marion. And whereas Marion's elected officials encourage all residents and community organizations to celebrate the value of harmonious and diverse communities and support the goal of fair housing for all people. Now for thou, I, William Brandt, on behalf of Nicholas Abu Osley, Mayor of City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim April 22 as Fair Housing Month and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support fair house.
Renee, would you like to say anything?
Sure.
Okay.
Thanks, Councilman Brandt. That's kind of fun for Will and I because we happen to work at the same real estate company and we've worked together in the same office for a number of years. So, thank you. I have a couple of comments here that I wanted to make. Fair housing is important to me because I am a Realtor and have been for 28 years. And I also serve as a commissioner for the Civil Rights Commission. I have served on the board for the Housing Fund for Lynn County and I currently serve on the Housing Opportunity Committee for the National Association of Realtors. I'll be heading to Washington DC at the end of this month for some important meetings. Fair housing or affordable housing go hand in hand. Homeownership is the most important investment someone will ever likely make. The promise to maybe one day pass something to your children. Homeownership is the very cornerstone of the American dream. However, in Iowa, about 30% of black people own homes compared to 75% of white people. In 2017, while serving on the board, on the Housing Fund Board for Lynn County, our board granted a large sum of money for a project on the northwest side of Cedar Rapids, an apartment complex with 45 units that would serve lower-income families. There was intense opposition from area residents. City council turned the project down. I happened to read some comments a couple of days later on Facebook and was shocked where I read some racist comments while others simply didn't want certain people to live in their neighborhood. I decided that I wanted to do something. I came up with an idea of putting together a tour of area projects that we had funded both in Cedar Rapids and in Marion to showcase where similar projects were already in existence. All to try and dispel the myth of what affordable housing actually looks like. We wrote a grant to get funding from the National Association of Realtors for my project. We rented a Windstar bus. I hired a caterer. Because if you provide food, people will come. Next, I contacted TV's news channels, the Gazette, and started to invite people to get on the bus for affordable housing. We got enough response to fill the bus twice. So we had a morning tour and then we had another afternoon tour. Lunch was served when the morning tour returned while the other folks were just arriving. Getting on the bus were city staffers, lawmakers, Realtors, news media, and others. People on the bus listened to an MC that gave them highlights of the projects as they rode along in a comfortable seat. People were very excited about what they learned that day. Many had no idea that these projects even existed. They learned what a positive impact these projects had on these neighborhoods. Fact is that once these projects went up in these neighborhoods, property owners started also making improvements and crime rates went down. The project went before council a second time and a swing voter or swing council member who had voted no before voted yes and the project was approved. He stated that if opponents could see the positive impacts of affordable housing units in other parts of the city, they might have a different view. Finally, I want to thank council for their continued support of the housing assistance grants. Making the difference in these families and our community is the right thing to do.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing that information with us and appreciate your active advocacy for affordable housing. Thank you. Yes. Oh, go ahead, Tom.
I'd like to thank Renee. Renee introduced me to the Housing Fund for Lynn County Board. I think Will had introduced us together. But I sat on the board and I'm still on that board and it's, I was on that tour and it was great. And I would say that there's a lot that's come to the community from that board that we aren't even aware of. And I've tried to relay that that is important for the council to understand and hopefully that'll be brought back. So I appreciate you bringing this forward and thank you for introducing me to the board.
I'm glad that you're still thanking me.
Thank you again, Renee. Okay, our second proclamation this evening is regarding Child, National Child Abuse Prevention Month. And Councilmember Harper has offered to read that one. And we do have, is Avery Carlson here? Okay. We thought that Avery would be here to accept it, but we'll read it and then we can send it to Avery.
Whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem and requires action from anyone in our community to prevent it. And whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of Marion and Lynn County. And whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological and emotional and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created amongst social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement, and businesses and families. And whereas all members of a community benefit from creating conditions that support strong and healthy families. And whereas, communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas, we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas, prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now therefore, I, Grant Harper, on behalf of Mayor Nicholas Abu Osley, do hereby proclaim April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Marion, Iowa, and urge all residents to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families.
Thank you. Thank you, Grant. Okay. Next on the agenda is a public forum, which is a time that is set aside for comments from members of the public on any topic that is listed on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. If there are any comments associated with an item that is on the agenda for a public hearing, there will be time to speak at that time. Is there anyone here to address council? Please come forward, state your name and address. And go ahead. You're welcome.
My name is Craig Rairden and I live at 1,000 Creek Bend Court in Marion. Appreciate the opportunity to talk to you tonight about a resolution that you'll be considering later to suspend certain portions of the airport layout plan. As I said, my name's Craig Rairden. I serve on your airport advisory board. I'm also a private pilot. I did all my private pilot training at the Marion Airport in 1991 and 92. Flew with Jan and Perry Walton when they owned the airport. And so I do have some connection going back 30 years. I have a single-engine and a multi-engine instrument rating. I'm not a commercial pilot, but I've owned three different airplanes. My current airplane's based at Marion. We've been there for 15 years. And so I have a lot of experience with the Marion Airport. In the 30 years that I've been flying, I've flown my tiny general aviation aircraft into airports as small as Abel Island and Gutenberg, which is a 2,600-foot runway on a 2,800-foot island in the middle of the Mississippi River. That's a turf runway. And I've flown to airports as large as Chicago-Hare, Dallas-Fort Worth International, Atlanta-Hartsfield. In my current little airplane that I fly, I've landed at airports in all 48 continent or contiguous US states. And also to, not in that airplane, but also to Vancouver International in Canada. So needless to say, I've been to a few airports. This resolution that you'll be looking at later, I believe, is badly argued and jumps to some conclusions that it doesn't justify. And I want to just briefly hit some of those and offer a suggestion. So the resolution says that the that the airport layout plan says that the east-west runway that you would like to not build has an estimated cost of 9.5 million. That is in fact correct. But what the resolution doesn't say is that that's spread over about 18 years in that plan. The only amount of that that would be an immediate consideration would be about 2.5 million for land acquisition. And even that doesn't have to be done today or next week or next year. It's just the first step of building that additional runway. So the argument is somewhat misleading. It's not a $9.5 million cost tomorrow. The resolution also states that Medco has been holding land unreserved and undeveloped due to the potential of an east-west runway thereby hindering commercial development, which would be tax revenue for the city. Medco did in fact request clarification of the city's position, but it did not request that the ALP be modified. It did not request that the east-west runway not be considered for development. Rather, it asked the city to clarify what it was doing, given that the city failed to uphold its obligation to properly zone for the airport layout plan that the city created. Because the airport layout plan is the way that we all know what the city's plans are for the future, the failure to zone for that plan raised a lot of issues about what exactly is going on. So it's the lack of clarity, not the specific plan that I believe Medco is questioning. There's a couple of little points in the resolution. One stating that there's no way that the Marion Airport can be part of the National Plan of Integrated Airport Systems, which is NIPUS. And because it's not and never will be part of NIPUS, it's not eligible for federal funding. There's a similar argument saying that the eastern Iowa airport would not be able to utilize the Marion Airport as a reliever for traffic in Cedar Rapids. It's important to realize that the ALP, neither the ALP nor your advisory committee nor Lux Air nor anyone anywhere has ever suggested that Marion needs to be a NIPUS airport or that we need to be a reliever for traffic in Cedar Rapids. So those arguments are just irrelevant. They don't really address the issue. One of the amusing ones I found that the city has many requests for capital improvement project funding and there are more requests than there are funding available. And my guess is that every project that comes up is requesting more funds than what's available. So while that may be a true statement, I don't know that it's specific to the airport. So the resolution concludes that based on current needs, city council has found that it's in the interest of the city to suspend all provisions of the airport layout plan related to an additional east-west runway. The resolution doesn't lay out what those needs are or how the city may have found that it's in the interest of the city to come to that conclusion that it should suspend that east-west runway. As a result, it's kind of a non sequitur. It doesn't follow from the arguments that have been made. But what it further demonstrates that I think is really important is that the city doesn't understand how important that east-west runway is to creating a functional airport. The the ALP itself says that as the airport is with its north-south runway even lengthened and paved the way it is now, that that airport barely meets the needs and maybe doesn't meet the needs of the existing uses of the airport. And we're talking about wanting that airport to serve Marion, not just now, but in the future. And as a result, you have to understand what that east-west runway does. It means that the airport It means that the airport's more useful more of the time because of the wind direction as it hits the airport. The current runway sits mostly at an angle to the wind and makes it difficult for a small aircraft to to use the airport much of the time. So it's necessary to have that east-west as an alternative. I think it's further worth noting that the city's own Airport Advisory Committee, which exists for the purpose of advising the city about the airport, was not consulted at any time during the drafting of this resolution. It's also worth noting that no stakeholder is calling for the city to abandon the ALP or the east-west runway. Neither Luxair nor the Airport Advisory Committee nor Medco nor any other person or organization has asked the city to abandon its commitment to the airport, which is basically what you're doing when you refuse to consider that east-west runway. Now, the ALP is somewhat confusing if you don't read it carefully and if you don't understand what it's trying to say. It talks about the current north-south runway, and it talks about two different lengths for that runway. It talks about an east-west runway with three different lengths and two different surface types. And then it puts together combinations of a short east-west and a long north-south or a long east-west and a short north-south and turf versus concrete. And so and it talks about the pros and cons of all of that. So I can understand where that that might be confusing for someone that doesn't understand how important that east-west runway is. But again, without that, the airport isn't even meeting its its current needs. What I'd like to suggest is that the council reject this proposed resolution and immediately task city staff and your Airport Advisory Committee with reexamining the ALP and and coming up with something that is more actionable, is more consistent with the needs of all the stakeholders as they exist today, not as we imagine that they might exist back in twenty fourteen sixteen, whenever this thing was created. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else to address counsel on any item that's part of the agenda but not associated with public hearing? Please come forward. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Nett. Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three zero three nine eight through three zero four four three. This will include items A one through G three.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A one through G three, resolutions three zero three nine eight through three zero four four three. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. For the next item, I will turn it over to turn the meeting over to Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Harper.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abalosely's abstention as follows. Items A one through F one, resolutions three zero four 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 through three zero four four nine.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abalosely's abstentions as follows. Items A one through F one, resolutions three zero four 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 through three zero four four nine. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. And we have one abstention.
And I'll ask you to also handle the next two items.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number three zero four five zero, suspending provisions of the airport layout plan relating to any additional east-west runway.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three zero four five zero, suspending provisions of the airport layout plan, ALP, relating to any additional relating to any additional east-west runway. Discussion.
Yes, Your Honor?
Yes.
So I appreciated Mr. Rerden's commentary that he gave at the beginning of our meeting this afternoon. And over the last several days, I've been thinking about the importance of this particular resolution. And with that regard, as I as I think about the correspondence that we've received from several stakeholders, the Airport Committee, Medco, and and others, as well as the work that we have recently completed that has resulted in the next agenda item, our amended and restated fixed base operator lease with Luxair. I would like to request that we table this resolution number three zero four five zero. And there are a few reasons for that. As I mentioned, we've just completed the work to develop a revised lease. And in that work, we certainly discussed the notion of improving our consistent discussions with Luxair about the airport operations and more broadly had acknowledged the need to take sufficient time to formulate a long-term vision of the airport that that has clarity and understanding built into it. And so that necessarily takes time and would in a in a in a form, it would ultimately inform whether or not this specific resolution is our right path. The other thing that I think is important to understand, and this is a recent, I think, understanding in communications with with Medco, their original ask of us to clarify the our intent in early February, I think we assumed that there was something urgent there. There is not a time-sensitive land purchase. There is something that is being contemplated, but it's not that we have to make a quick decision in order to clear the way for that for that particular real estate procurement. So it's on those collective set of reasons. Again, I would like us to defer action on this table it. I would imagine that given the broad-based discussions and what we have what we have committed to with Luxair and in ongoing dialogue, that we can, certainly within well within nine months, we can we can recalibrate our thinking around the ALP and and come to a either affirmation that this is the right decision or perhaps an alternative. So I ask that we table it so we can do that work. I will. I will second Mr. Harper's motion to table that item as well.
I don't know if that was a formal motion to table, so that might need to be stated differently.
Okay. Kara, tell me how to proceed.
If you'd like to table it, you simply make a motion to table the resolution.
Okay.
I think you just added some extra discussion.
Should I restate it more concisely?
That would be helpful.
Okay.
Concisely, you say. Okay. I would. I move that we table resolution number three zero four five zero, suspending the provisions of the airport layout plan relating to any additional east-west runway.
Second.
Okay, it has been motion. There's been a motion made and a second to table resolution number three zero four five zero, suspending provisions of the airport layout plan related to any additional east-west runway. Any discussion? Seeing no one to discuss, we will vote. All those in favor of tabling resolution number three zero four five zero, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
And we have one abstention, so motion carries to table. And we'll move on to A two.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number three zero four five one, approving amended and restated fixed base fixed base operator lease with Luxair Aviation LLC.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three zero four five one, approving amended and restated fixed base operator FBO lease with Luxair Aviation LLC. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. And we have one abstention. Motion carries. I'll move the meeting back to the mayor.
Thank you.
And I have the next one. Your Honor, make a motion to approve resolution number three zero four five two, authorizing the use of a preliminary official statement in connection with the sale of general obligation corporate purpose bonds series twenty twenty-two A.
Second. It's been moved by Mayor Protem Brandt, seconded by Councilmember Jensen, to approve resolution number three zero four five two, authorizing the use of a preliminary official statement in connection with the sale of general obligation corporate purpose bonds series twenty twenty-two A. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion to approve resolution number three zero four five two, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three zero four five three, approving contract with Insight Performance Management Group LLC regarding strategic planning services and authorizing payment in an amount not to exceed nine thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three zero four five three, approving the contract with Insight Performance Management Group for strategic planning services and authorizing the payment in an amount of not to exceed nine thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of resolution number three zero four five three, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number three zero four five four, approving professional services agreement with Gov HR USA regarding recruitment services for fire chief and deputy city manager and authorizing payment in the amount of forty-five thousand five hundred dollars.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three zero four five four, approving the professional services agreement with Gov HR USA for recruitment services for fire chief and deputy city manager and authorizing payment of forty-five thousand five hundred dollars. Discussion. Go ahead, Will.
I was curious on what we're looking at for timeframe on both hires or with the consultant, anyway, the process.
The the process is about fourteen to sixteen weeks. We're going to start tomorrow with a call to the assigned recruiter and begin mapping that out. We've already done some initial legwork as it relates to both positions. So hopefully that will speed things up, but we do have an interim plan in place and we're executing on it.
And so the consultant will be doing both simultaneously?
We'll we'll work through that. Kirsten, I don't know if there's anything. The goal is the goal is to get this both positions filled as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Okay, in case it didn't get picked up by the recording, Kirsten, our HR director said that the process would be simultaneous. Okay? That's just for the record. Okay.
Your Honor.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, just as as an input to that process, do we have all the supporting documentation, job descriptions or job profiles, however they may be titled, and other ancillary inputs all prepared?
We do, and that's part of the process that the recruiter will also do is go through, review that, make sure it is up to date, put together the brochure, start hitting the 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 normal advertising avenues. They'll they'll go out and shake the tree and and find and actually recruit candidates as well, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, other discussion questions? All right, we'll vote then. All those in favor of approving resolution number three zero four five four, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three zero four five five, approving contract with Schrader Excavating for the demolition of the Public Services Facility.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three zero four five five, approving the contract with Schrader Excavating for demolition of the Public Services Facility. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of resolution three zero four five five, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number three zero four five six, approving purchase of benches and trash trash receptacles from Anova Furnishings regarding the twenty twenty-one Central Corridor, Seventh Avenue, from Eighth Street to Twelfth Street, pavement reconstruction and streetscaping project and authorizing payment in the amount of eighty-six thousand sixty dollars.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three zero four five six, approving the purchase of benches and trash receptacles from Anova Furnishings in connection with the twenty twenty-one Central Corridor, Seventh Avenue from Eighth Street to Twelfth Street, pavement reconstruction and streetscaping project and payment in the amount of eighty-six thousand sixty dollars. Discussion.
Yes, cool.
Curious on the timeframe to get those in. Are they going to be in and installed this summer still?
So there's a, oh, sorry, there's a ten to eleven week lead time. And so the why that we're we're doing it right now is just so that it hits on it'll hit by the the time the next fiscal year hits. So financially, that's just when we wanted it, be able to pay it.
But they should be installed this year.
Yes, they'll be installed this year.
I'm just curious with delays with things these days.
Yeah, no, we've been we've been queued on on the lead time of things and the other items that we do have them in stock now are the other planners and all that will be in place too, that will help be kind of that barricade between traffic and pedestrians.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, other discussion? All those in favor of resolution number three zero four five six, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. This time we have a public hearing regarding the twenty twenty-two Talby Park Project. I'm sorry. Oh, did I miss one? Sorry. I missed. I missed E one. Okay.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve ordinance number two two zero five, amending chapter sixty-three of the Code of Ordinances, establishing a speed limit on Sixth Avenue as thirty-five miles per hour from Fifteenth Street to Twenty-seventh Street, the second consideration.
Second.
So moved and seconded to approve the second consideration of ordinance number twenty-two dash zero five, amending chapter sixty-three of the Code of Ordinances and establishing the speed limit on Sixth Avenue as thirty-five miles per hour from Fifteenth to Twenty-seventh Streets. Discussion. All those in favor of approving the second consideration of ordinance number twenty-two dash zero five, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Now we have the public hearing for the twenty twenty-two Talby Park Project. Public hearing is now open and we have a presentation.
Yes, Your Honor. So this project had three bidders. The low bid came in from Ratchy Construction at a hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy cents, just over the engineer's estimate. It has a light late start date between nine twelve and nine twenty-six with thirty-five working days and three hundred dollars per day in liquidated damages. And we are recommending approval.
Okay, are there any members of the public here to address counsel, either in favor or in opposition of this measure? Please come forward. Okay, have you received any comments outside of this meeting?
We have not.
Please note that for the record. And we'll close the public hearing and proceed to the resolution. Mr. Nett.
Thank you. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three zero four five seven, excuse me, three zero four five seven, accepting bids and awarding contract to Ratchy Construction Company regarding the twenty twenty-two Talby Park Project in the amount of one hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy cents.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three zero four five seven, accepting the bids and awarding the contract to Ratchy Construction for the twenty twenty-two Talby Park Project in the amount of one hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy cents. Discussion.
Have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Can it be explained? Can it be explained again? I don't know if this might be a Seth question, but when it comes to the farmer's market at Talby, somehow that's gonna impact it and what the plan is for the market.
So we have already prorated the rates for vendors and everything else of that nature, but, uh, we are, uh, we're cutting off, I believe, the, the last farmer's market date, but that's when we have the, the start date, so we're really only missing that one.
So it just won't, it won't be elsewhere, it just won't happen?
Well, we are, we are working with, with a chamber, with their harvest market, so we'll have that, those opportunities to be able to send vendors to.
Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, Seth, does this include then, just as a reminder, the sidewalk work to the playground?
So yes, we'll have a, we'll have a walkway from the, from the playground, uh, leading to the basketball courts for, for the school. But there won't be any sidewalk that runs parallel to, uh, that's thirty first, thirty first.
First. Okay, all right, good. I, I was just curious about the access sidewalk into the playground.
Yes.
And the like.
Okay, thanks.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution number three zero four five seven, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. We have another public hearing this evening regarding the twenty twenty two Albernett Road and Echo Hill Road Intersection Improvements Project. Public hearing is now open. We have the presentation.
Yes, your honor. So this is our full roundabout at the intersection of Albernett Road and Echo Hill. There was a half a million dollar T SIP or Traffic Safety Improvement Project funding that goes towards this project as well. But it was locally let, the low bid was Rachi Construction at one million four hundred and eighty four thousand six hundred and sixty six dollars and five cents. About a hundred and ten percent of the engineer's estimate. There are four bids total. The early and late start date is six six twenty two. The first milestone, which will have the west, south and east legs open back up to traffic, is eight five twenty two with one thousand dollars per day in charges if they do not meet that milestone date, and that's for the school, the two schools to the east and those property owners. And then there's ninety working days for the entire project to complete the entire project in that north leg. And we're recommending proceeding with that bid.
Okay, thank you. Are there any members of the public present to address counsel either in favor or in opposition of this measure? Please come forward. Okay, have we received any comments outside the meeting?
We have not, your honor.
Okay, please note that for the record, and seeing that no one's coming forward, we will close the public hearing and proceed to the resolution.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number three zero four five eight accepting bids and awarding contract to Rachi Construction Company regarding the twenty twenty two Albernett Road and Echo Hill Road Intersection Improvement Project in the amount of one million four hundred and eighty four thousand six hundred and sixty six dollars and five cents.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve resolution number three zero four five eight accepting the bids and awarding the contract to Rachi Construction for the twenty twenty two Albernett Road and Echo Hill Road Intersection Improvement Project in an amount of one million four hundred and eighty four dollars, six hundred and sixty six dollars and five cents. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of resolution three zero four five eight, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve of the project calendar regarding the twenty twenty two Sanitary CAPP Rehabilitation Project as follows. And this will include resolution numbers three zero four five nine through three zero four six one.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the twenty twenty two Sanitary CIPP Rehabilitation Project, including resolutions three zero four five nine through three zero four six one. Discussion.
Your honor, just a comment. I, so I'm gonna be really fascinated when this is underway to go see the process, curing in place plastic pipe seems fascinating. And the other thing I thought that might be useful, and I don't know if Amber is, is still here, but if, if it is as interesting as I have been told, maybe we ought to take a video of it and have it, have this up somewhere on one of our website, just so that people who are curious can see it conveniently.
So just to clarify, it's cured in place pipe, it's not plastic.
Okay.
And this image right here is actually taken from video that we have from a previous year, so we can put some videos in there. The problem is a lot of it you don't see because they, they basically push the pipe into the existing pipe, so it's, you, you really only see them working from the outside, and then they televise the lines before and after to make sure that all the services are cut open.
Ah, okay, that's useful to know. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion is approved.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number three zero four six two approving contract in bond with Eastern Iowa Excavating and Concrete LLC regarding the twenty twenty two pavement patching project and authorizing payment in the amount of seven hundred twenty seven thousand seven hundred twenty three dollars and thirty cents.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three zero four six two approving the contract in bond with Eastern Iowa Excavating regarding the twenty twenty two pavement patching project in an amount of seven hundred twenty seven thousand seven hundred twenty three dollars and thirty cents. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of resolution three zero four six two, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. And for the next item, I'm gonna turn it over to the mayor for ten. Sorry.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number three zero four six three approving contract in bond with LL Pelling Company Incorporated regarding the twenty twenty two Low Park Roadway Overlay Project and authorizing payment in the amount of one hundred and forty seven thousand two hundred and seventy seven dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three zero four six three approving contract in bond with LL Pelling Company Incorporated regarding the twenty twenty two Low Park Roadway Overlay Project and authorizing payment in the amount of one hundred and forty seven thousand two hundred and seventy seven dollars and fifty cents. Discussion.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mike, is, do you have any idea why there was only one bidding contractor?
So the local supply of hot mix asphalt is from LL Pelling. So paint asphalt also can put it down, but they have to buy it from Pelling, and there might be a premium in that case.
Okay. Perfect sense. Thank you.
Anything else? Saying that, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. We have one abstention. And motion is approved. I will move the meeting back to the mayor.
Thank you.
Yes, your honor, I move to approve resolution number three zero four six four approving a request to defer sidewalk located at nine ninety nine Enterprise Drive, Marion, Iowa.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Harper, seconded by Councilmember Jensen to approve resolution number three zero four six four approving a request to defer sidewalk located at nine ninety nine Enterprise Drive. Discussion. All those in favor of approving resolution number three zero four six four, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion is approved. Next item is a public hearing regarding Marion Enterprise Center Flex Space Preliminary Site Development Plan for nine ninety nine Enterprise Drive. Do we have a presentation?
I can do a quick one, your honor. The following is a public hearing that's related to the next couple items on the agenda. Specifically, a preliminary and final site development plan authorization for the project identified as the Enterprise Center Flex Space. The project's located at the MEC just west of the airport runway on the east side of the intersection of Enterprise Drive and Marion Airport. The building proposed is a, a large flex place building with multiple multiple areas within the building for multiple businesses. None have been named at this point, and it's, it's a speculative building. We're pretty excited about the, the opportunities that this will be by, will provide to the business park and ultimately the city as a whole. As the council's aware, this, this area is zoned PDS, which means it's planned development special. There are regulations within the MEC that are, the development or is required to abide by. The staff report goes into great detail in providing the provisions of that particular zoning and then an analysis of the site plans on the overhead above. As noted within the document, the, the site plan and the elevations that are provided do meet the standards, and staff is recommending approval. It went to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the commission is also recommending approval to the council to, to move forward. I would note, and I always try to do this in these areas just to raise awareness, there is a no build zone on the east side of this property that's relative to the airport. And so there are height restrictions beyond that, and within the staff report, you'll note that we did identify those height restrictions of the building. Even though it's outside of that no build zone, there, there is a elevation that's required to be noted in development out in the MEC, and those provisions are provided within the staff report. So I don't know if there's any questions specific to that, but I'd be happy to answer those or any other questions relative to the proposed building.
Okay. So we'll hold questions for when we get to the, the resolutions. At this time, the public hearing is open. Are there any members of the public here to address counsel on this item, either in favor or in opposition?
Good evening, counsel. I am Judge Snore of four thirty one Fifth Avenue Southwest. Tom summarized everything very well, but I'll just throw myself out there for any questions you may have on the project.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Snore? Thank you. Any other individuals here to address counsel on this item? Please come forward. Okay, have we received any comments outside the meeting?
We did receive one comment, a letter from Medco who wrote in support of the development.
Okay, anything else? Mr. Trey, how did your department receive any comments direct to contact?
They did not.
Okay. All right, so we'll note that for the public hearing, for the public record, and we will close the public hearing, proceed to the resolutions.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three zero four six five approving Marion Enterprise Center Flex Space Preliminary Site Development Plan located at nine ninety nine Enterprise Drive, Marion, Iowa. This is coming from DMFA LLC.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve resolution number three zero four six five approving the Marion Enterprise Center Flex Space Preliminary Site Development Plan for nine ninety nine Enterprise Drive. Discussion.
Yes, go ahead.
Just a quick comment. I agree with Tom a hundred percent that it is really nice to see a spec building going on in Marion. I mean, I go back to when I was on the Medco Board many years ago, pushing for a spec building. Back then, it was probably a higher risk. Today, again, we've had examples brought forth where companies have not located in this area because there was not a building already ready to go. So the, the fact that we do have build ready ground out there is a big plus in the MEC, but now having a spec building out there is even more advantageous. So I think that's a great thing for the city.
Other discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution number three zero four six five, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number three zero four six six approving Marion Enterprise Center Flex Space Final Site Development Plan located at nine ninety nine Enterprise Drive, Marion, Iowa.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three zero four six six approving Marion Enterprise Center Flex Space Final Site Development Plan for nine ninety nine Enterprise Drive. Discussion. All those in favor of approving resolution number three zero four six six, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I make a motion directing staff to, to submit an application to the Corridor Metropolitan Planning Organization, CMPO for the completion of the North Marion Subarea Plan in partnership with Lynn County and the Solid Waste Agency.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to direct staff to submit an application to the Corridor Metropolitan Planning Organization for the completion of the North Marion Subarea Plan in partnership with Lynn County and the Solid Waste Agency. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Tom, you had something?
I just wanted to, this wasn't on the, on the agenda. On Tuesday, it was added in between. I just wanted to, to bring it forward. As you can see, there's a short timeline on this. We've been working internally as a team to, to put together a, a project to submit to the Corridor MPO organization to, to acquire or to hopefully obtain funding through that organization to get this area planned out. Obviously, we're just, this is just authorizing us to move forward with the submittal for the project. We have reached out to the county and as well as the Lynn County Solid Waste Agency, and they're, they're, they're joined us, with us in a, would be a joint application to proceed with a planning study on the north side of Marion. I don't, I don't know if the council's aware, but the Solid Waste Agency owns quite a bit of property even around, it's the footprint of the building or of the landfill. Their plans in the, in the, is a closeout plan as a, as a requirement of their facility. They're going to be going through a planning process that would, would outline what happens to the landfill upon its being closed. And, and so this would, we, we'd be all three partnering and working together to do a long range plan out in this area to identify future land uses. Corridor alignment for roadways, so Echo Hill Road, for example, comes through this area and, and joins south of the landfill. There's been a lot of conversations recently with, with that area, and we would hope to have some resolve to that alignment as well as starting to address, it's hard to believe, but starting to address land use and potential growth out to County Home Road. So.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, Tom, it, the, the memo says that the submittals due April fifteenth with an anticipated eighteen to twenty four month turnaround time. I guess the question is, is that for Randy and I, as we sit on the two different MPO boards, how quick do you think we're gonna see that come floating through for consideration at executive or policy boards?
That is, that's a very good question, and I, I don't have an answer for it. I can check with, with this middle, Kesha Billings in the department's handled a lot of the correspondence related to this, so I can check with her and get something out to the council if you'd like.
So, so is the decisioning through those bodies eighteen to twenty four months, or what's that timeline?
No, I, I think the, I think the submittals are due on the fifteenth, and it'll, it'll be directed to the, the board for a decision. I think their turnaround time may be related to the funding because these are federal funds.
Right.
So that may be putting it in line in the queue to get that accomplished, but I'll, I'll clarify in a moment over to the council.
Thanks.
Yep.
Go ahead, Randy.
Tom, can you just, for the benefit of everyone, can you explain to us the island areas or the white areas that are surrounded by those? Are those? I'll just let you explain.
So, so the, the heavier gray areas, that, that's the existing city limits. Everything that's white would be in the county. The, the red area is the, is the proposed limitations of the, of the planning study area. The areas that look as though they're islands are, are, are currently developed or platted properties. So if you, if you put a, if you had the aerial underneath there, you would see that those two particular spaces are built out or platted, maybe incorrect. Maybe incorrect on the west side. That may be. I don't know that that's platted, but we've we've been engaged with that property owner, I guess, is what I should say.
Thanks, Tom.
Go ahead.
Just to clarify, because I can't quite read that, that top road, is that County Home?
Yes, just below the red line is is County Home Road. The idea is that we'd we'd want to do some land use studies on either side of the road.
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of approving the motion directing staff to submit the application to the Corridor M P O for the completion of the Marion, North Marion Subarea Plan, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three zero four six seven approving a contract with Tech Ops Specialty Vehicles regarding the mobile bookmobile project for the Marion Public Library and authorizing payment in the amount of three hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents.
It's been moved by council member Sternad, seconded by Mayor Protem to approve resolution number three zero four six seven approving the contract with Tech Ops Specialty Vehicles for the mobile library and authorizing payment in the amount of three hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Discussion. You have, you have a comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify and address some of the questions and comments from Tuesday evening. I I know one of the comments from Mr. Harper was regarding the timeline for the delivery of the bookmobile being potentially two years. In speaking with the vendor over the last day or so, they assured us that that would be the maximum and it is highly likely that it would come in sooner than that. They couldn't commit to a a sooner date. So there's there's that bit of information regarding the the fifty-seven thousand dollars. Admittedly, that that is a significant amount of money. And when you look at the original master plan for keeping services at a level for a growing community, the options that were chosen, the least expensive option was the eighteen million dollar library facility and the bookmobile. The next least expensive option was twenty-one million dollars approximation. So that's a difference of approximately two point eight million dollars. So while I recognize fifty-seven thousand dollars is is significant with the ongoing efforts of our foundation director in seeking donations and the support that we've seen from the community raising over two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, we're we're very hopeful that we're going to be able to raise that additional fifty-seven thousand dollars, but are asking for a safety net from the city for that fifty-seven thousand dollars. And regarding your your question about alternatives, the the library team brainstormed over the last couple days reflecting on your question. And I think we can be very creative in the short term for reaching out into the community, providing additional services, but I think that is a short term solution. And I do think the the answer is sticking to the the master plan of having that bookmobile as well as that beautiful new building that we have next door. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you may have. Amy is here to talk about any of the fundraising questions you may have and thank you for your potential support.
But do you have questions for for them? Go ahead.
Yeah, can you just remind us what the size of this bookmobile is? I I cannot recall.
I don't. Please, Amy.
I don't know why I retained this, but I did. Thirty-four foot long chassis. It's built on a thirty-four, thirty-four foot long chassis. A front and rear entrance. It can hold up to three thousand items. The interior, if you'll remember, is custom built, so it's modular units. So we have the capability, when we go out into the communities, some of the areas that can't come to us, we're able to almost transform the interior of that mobile unit to serve the need. So if we're going to a senior facility and we want to have a technology workshop for them, we can reconfigure the inside so it's a tech, high tech booth almost where they can come on and do that. If we're doing programming for youth or schools, we can reconfigure the inside to meet the programming needs of the people that we're serving. So three thousand books and materials on there. We've got computer wifi. It'll be a mobile hotspot wifi on wheels. A variety of indoor interior and out outside program capabilities.
Great. Your honor. Go ahead, Grant, and then we'll go to Colette.
Okay. Just a question. Do we, do you have any sense of what the service life of the vehicle will be? And maybe, maybe Ryan has some insight to that, given the fact he's managing a fleet. I I'm just curious what the, you know, is are we expecting to get twenty, twenty years of service, twenty-five years?
I don't suspect, I I don't know the answer to your question, but based upon the knowledge that I do have about bookmobiles, I would suspect between ten to fifteen years of service, long enough to give us the long term, short term, long term solution until we build another branch somewhere in Marion? Or is it too soon?
Planting the seed. Thank you.
Okay, and we're out of time. Go ahead, Clark.
So I just wanted to say thank you for coming back and providing answers to our questions. Appreciate that. Based on some of the things you shared, suddenly I have more questions. One of them is, is so, I mean, you have to have somebody that drives the bookmobile. Do they have to have a certain certification to drive and will, I mean, do you have to have an extra librarian to drive the bookmobile around and how often what? So maybe I'm getting into the weeds, but those are the things that I was just thinking about.
Sure. So this bookmobile does not require a C D L. It just requires a regular operator's license. And when the library didn't backfill the open I T manager position, that was converted into several part-time positions with preparing for the arrival of the bookmobile, having additional staff on hand to be able to be out in the community on the rig and doing programming for the the members of the community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm volunteering the retired council members to drive it.
Excellent. Council office hours on the bookmobile.
Maybe maybe some detours.
We could do our office hours.
Oh. Great idea if I'm driving.
All right. Are there any other questions before we bring it back to this discussion among council and voting? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That was good additional information. Are there any comments or discussion among the council about this in favor or against or anybody feeling a certain way? Go ahead.
Yeah, one one last question. I think we saw on Tuesday during our work session, there was a line item in the ARPA utilization plan of, I think, sixty thousand dollars. Is that the same or different than this current need that that Bill just outlined to us?
I think Amel can answer that one.
Yes, it was proposed. Just in case council is in agreement with the approval of this additional cost.
Okay, so that would be, that would, that would be the backstop if necessary.
Correct.
Here, Mark. Just, oh, yes. Go ahead, Ryan.
Thank you, your honor. Just that was the backstop. But we will, you'll, the council will have quite a few opportunities in your future to to revisit the ARPA that list as we start beginning to develop some of the implementation strategies as it relates. So as we do that and as things become clearer with the bookmobile and some other things, those numbers will continue to refine and we'll we'll provide continuous updates for you all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions? For your vote? Okay. All those in favor of approving resolution number three zero four six seven, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. At this time, we have another public forum, which is a time set aside for comments from members of the public to the council regarding any item, whether or not it's on the agenda. Any one here to address the council? At this time, come forward. Okay, we'll close this part of the meeting and move on to council comments before our closed session this evening. We'll start with Mr. Sternad.
I have nothing, your honor. Thank you. Okay.
Nothing.
Okay.
No, thank you.
Steve?
Uh, yeah, my my biggest comment is where is spring? Where's the sunshine?
Ryan, get on that.
I am still waiting to get my golf clubs out on the course. But the one sign of spring I think we're starting to see is the kickoff of construction projects. So obviously, some like the library are in their final stages, but obviously, when you got new projects out there, they have to wait until spring is starting. So we are starting to see that go on and so that is at least one sign of spring that's happening.
Well, Steve stole my my inquiry about when's when is real nice weather going to hit us, but I wouldn't waste a nice day golfing. I'll just tell you that.
Eddie, you want to be my daddy?
That might be negotiable.
Yeah. So for my part, I wanted to just reiterate to the council what city managers just alluded to is that the ARPA allocations that we have been presented to the council are are ideas and suggestions. They're not technically recommendations from from anyone. They're they've gathered ideas from the staff themselves and they've done their research and and they've also gathered ideas from community partners. But certainly, we haven't voted on anything and nothing is set in stone. So we do have the ability to continue to think of ways we want to make the most impact with this money. This is one time money that I think, you know, we we really should try to get the biggest bang we can and make make the most impact that we can with with these funds. So just would encourage everyone to stay engaged and to, you know, actively be part of the process and to think of ideas in ways that we can use these funds. The, since the last meeting, there were just just a few highlights of things that have that we have happened since the last meeting. We had a Marion Legislative Day at the Capitol where people from Medco, the chamber, as well as the city, our city manager and Steve and myself, is it anybody else? Stephen, yeah, went to the Capitol and talked with, met with our legislators and shared with them our thoughts about various pieces of legislation that were that were being considered. It was a good time to just make ourselves present there and it was a time well spent. This is an annual trip to Des Moines. I attended the Creekside Pride meeting the other day and that's really an exciting project. I think for for a number of years, I and other people have really pushed to 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 have the creek become a more of an amenity rather than just a liability going through our our city that we worry about flooding every every so often, that it can really be an amenity. Bodies of water in any community are seen as an amenity and they're utilized and people love, love to be next to water, even if it's a little stream, that the the sight and sound of water is very attractive to people. And we have this creek going through our city and I'm really, really happy to see this project moving forward. I think we're going to see some exciting proposals come out of it to really make it accessible to people and for education, for leisure, for recreation and to make it an actual usable amenity in our in our town. Some of us have canoed down it and it's really the most beautiful view of the city that I've seen. We've had several ribbon cuttings in the last couple of weeks. I, Chief and I attended the Emergency Management Director's Steve O'Connell's Retirement Reception and we wished him well in his retirement on behalf of our city. And City Manager Waller and and I have been meeting with boards and commissions, the heads of the boards and commissions. One by one, we've we've done four so far. And we're going to make that probably an annual, an annual thing to make sure that everyone's on the same page or we're moving so fast, there's so much happening and there are so many ways to influence what's going on and people, it's great that we have people that want to participate and be engaged. That's our goal is to have our residents be engaged in what's happening, to have ownership and what what's going on and to have input. And there there there's just a lot going on and it's good to have everyone be on the same page with our city staff and the city council and our city's plans and and direction. So that's been going very well and I'm glad that we're doing that. So I just want to thank everyone for working so hard. I know we're all working really hard. There's a lot going on. Our city's on a on a great path. Our citizen survey was very telling, I think, you know, both in in the things that were positive and the things that we need to work on. And I think it's it's a good time for Marion and we should, I just encourage everyone to keep working together and reaching higher so that we can move our city forward and continue to make it a standout community. And I think we're well on our way. So thank you, everyone, for your for your hard work. With that, we'll move on to the closed session.
Your honor, I move to adjourn to close session regarding land acquisition as permitted under section twenty-one point five one J, or is that I, of the Code of Iowa. And there are two separate measures.
Second.
It's been moved in second to adjourn to close session regarding land acquisition permitted under the Code of Iowa. May we have the legal counsel's statement?
Thank you, your honor. I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, section twenty-one point five one J.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any discussion before we vote? Okay, maybe we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mayor Abou Wassili?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Sternad?
Yes.
Thank you. We're adjourned to closed session. We'll return to open session upon completion. Thank you all for joining us. Have a great evening.